Tonight's city council meeting to order. And could we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Valente?
Here.
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
And Councilmember Erickson?
Here.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. As we kick off our meeting tonight, we do have a special portion of the agenda reserved for a special presentation on the Highway 61 corridor and future transit planning. Patrick and Abby, I don't know if you have any tea up before I hand it over to Washington County.
No, not really.
Mayor, do you want to approve the agenda?
Maybe we should start by approving the agenda. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as item number four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and we have an agenda approved. Thank you, Councilmember Husnick. With that, Abby, do you want to?
I don't. I just want to say that Maddy Dahlheimer with Washington County is here to present to you tonight just FYI and an opportunity to ask some questions if you provide some feedback to the county.
Perfect. Thank you. Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Let's see if the slides get up here. Perfect, all right. Well, hello, Mayor and council members. As Abby said, my name is Maddy Dahlheimer. I am a planner at Washington County Public Works. Here with me tonight are Lissa Leitner, the Planning Director of Public Works, and Commissioner Miron as well. We are here tonight to discuss future transit planning along the Highway 61 corridor. So for tonight's presentation, I'll go through three different parts. So firstly, I'll provide a high-level overview of the Highway 61 visioning and jurisdictional turnback study. Then I will go through background information and key considerations related to transit planning in the area. And lastly, I'll review the feedback we received from the Washington County Board at an initial work session on the topic. As Abby mentioned, our primary desired outcome in coming to the council tonight is to provide an update on the study and conversations that have been happening around transit planning in the area and then get this council's initial feedback or reaction or answer any questions that you might have. So jumping into the project overview, the map on the right shows the project area for the Highway 61 visioning and jurisdictional turnback study and highlights two different components that are part of the study. One part, as highlighted in red, is the visioning study within the city of Hugo for the Highway 61 corridor within their city limits. Hugo is participating financially in this component of the study and does not have recent planning documents that they feel capture the needs of the corridor. The second part of the study that's shown in green, the thick green line across the whole map, is the development of a jurisdictional transfer plan through the cities of Hugo and Forest Lake. So Highway 61 is currently a MINDOT facility and has been identified as a candidate for jurisdictional transfer to Washington County for many years. This project, our study, intends to identify a plan for the jurisdictional transfer of this roadway, including phasing cost estimates and necessary improvements that need to be included as a part of that transfer. As a part of this component of the study, we have had an initial meeting with Forest Lake City Staff to understand corridor needs that are called out in some of the city's existing planning documents, as well as to just get some boots-on-the-ground information and insight that may help inform the planning process and discussions with MINDOT. For that component, we will continue to coordinate with city staff as we progress through that piece of it. In reviewing the corridor context, we also have two unique components to consider. So the 61 corridor includes the highway corridor as well as the linear regional rail property, which is shown in the dash line on the screen here, which runs along the west side of the highway and is home to the Harwood Creek Regional Trail. The existence of the regional rail property is a unique component of this corridor study, which adds an additional layer to consider when planning for future right-of-way and infrastructure needs. The context of the regional rail property varies between Hugo and Forest Lake, with the rail property abutting Highway 61. If we go from south to north, we're abutting Highway 61 from the existing active rail line at County Highway 8 or 140th Street in Hugo up to just south of Highway 97 in Forest Lake, after which the rail corridor departs from the highway until you're kind of north of downtown, close to 8. The regional rail property and its future has been a primary point of discussion throughout the Hugo visioning process and is the primary driver to what's brought us here to this conversation tonight. As a part of the visioning study in Hugo, we received a range of feedback, most of which was focused on the downtown area, and several of which continued to come back to two primary themes. So one was exploring ways to create a more unified transportation corridor, right? So if we're coming to this study under the background information that the highway will eventually become a county highway, and then we'd have the regional rail property and the county highway under the same umbrella, does that open up any opportunities for how that space gets utilized? And two, a lot of those comments came back to the theme of exploring ways to really tighten up or narrow the feeling of the corridor through the downtown area in Hugo. Not surprisingly, what is going to happen with or what the opportunities are for that regional rail property were tied to many of the comments that we received. So on that note, we'll shift our focus to the regional rail property specifically, and I will provide a high-level summary of the background of this corridor, as well as some considerations related to the future of transit in the area. So if we back way up, we can start with the Rush Line Corridor, which began as a vision for more than 20 different communities to identify transit improvements and connections from Hinkley to downtown St. Paul. The current Purple Line project, which you're probably familiar with, from St. Paul to somewhere around 694, is part of the implementation of this vision. Washington County has supported the vision for transit along this corridor through the purchase of the regional rail property that we're discussing today, as well as through the opening of the Forest Lake Transit Center. From that initial vision, there have been several transit planning decisions and considerations to note related to this corridor. So the 2017 Rush Line Corridor Locally Preferred Alternative Report is the most recent transit study for the corridor and analyzed transit, both modes and routes, from St. Paul to Forest Lake. This study eliminated consideration of rail and dedicated bus rapid transit as viable alternatives north of White Bear Lake, and due to high cost and low ridership projections, and instead identified a connector bus service. You can see the figure in orange on the right-hand side of the screen. It's kind of where that connector bus service was shown. Implementation of the Purple Line BRT route was a direct result of the completion of this report and is an evolving process. A couple of refreshers or updates on that project is that in 2022, the White Bear Lake City Council passed a resolution opposing the BRT route in their community. That kicked off an analysis of alternative endpoints around 694. A screenshot of that is shown in purple of some different endpoints they're looking at. And lastly, and most recently, a route modification study is currently underway to reevaluate whether the bus could run along White Bear Avenue rather than the current alignment in the Ramsey County Regional Rail property, which also has the Bruce Vento Regional Trail Corridor. Other planning considerations to be aware of include our planning horizon, right? So generally, when we are conducting a planning study, we look out 20 years. From the information shared, our current planning horizon to 2040 or 2045 does not show demand for rail or dedicated bus rapid transit in this area. Due to the lack of demand and to more accurately reflect the transit system within that planning horizon, the Met Council has removed the Rush Line Corridor from the Transportation Policy Plan, the TPP, which is a regional planning document, north of White Bear Lake, right? So they've truncated that line at White Bear Lake in the 2040, and then will likely update that further with the 2050 updated plan. Additionally, there's been increased discussion across the industry and certainly throughout Washington County around the future of transit in general, and how and where fixed route services are most appropriate, or whether other forms of microtransit or on-demand transit will best serve local needs. So with those considerations, in addition to the feedback we are receiving from the visioning study in mind, county staff held a work session with the county board to get initial feedback on how we want to continue planning for future transit along this corridor. Desire direction from the board was framed around the three options shown here, to both explore the use of space between that regional rail property and the highway right-of-way, and also to explore the specific modes of transit that we are planning for. It's important to note that identifying right-of-way needs is a primary goal of the Hugo visioning study or the Hugo visioning process, as they have specific concerns about potential future impacts to their downtown development. And understanding which modes we are planning for has a significant impact on how big that footprint is going to be or how much space we would need. The implications or the impacts of that could be fairly similar when we go north on the corridor and how we talked about the regional rail property follows the highway up until you get to 97. North of 97, where the regional rail property departs from the highway corridor, the applications of the options shown here may vary, but the intent and implications to our current work would still apply. So if we kind of take a closer look at the three options that we discussed in that board work session, we've got three, and they include option number one, which is maintaining separate parallel transit and highway corridors, right? We have our regional rail property, and we have our highway corridor. They run parallel to one another. One is going to be used for our transit needs, one is going to be used for our highway needs. Options number two and three fall under the same umbrella and kind of under the guise of, hey, can we treat this corridor as more of a unified transportation corridor in that future where both are falling under county jurisdiction? So in that case, option number two would unify the corridor right under this unified umbrella and would ensure we account for enough right-of-way to preserve future rail or dedicated BRT as transit modes. Option number three would unify the corridor, fall under that same umbrella, and would not set aside right-of-way for rail and dedicated BRT modes, but would rather assume that future transit would be accommodated on the highway itself in mixed traffic or different shoulder-running options. Generally, if you look at these options from left to right, you can see on the bottom, there's the greatest right-of-way need or the greatest overall footprint on the left, and also the most transit modes kind of in consideration for future transit planning. As you move to the right, the right-of-way or that footprint decreases, the amount of space we need decreases, and some fixed route transit options, primarily a rail or a dedicated bus rapid transit lane, are removed from consideration in future transit. So overall feedback from the board was support to approach the highway and rail properties as a unified corridor. So there's pretty strong support for treating these as two parallel routes. Doesn't seem like the path forward that we want to go. So there's support for that unified corridor, and also a general openness to preclude future rail and dedicated BRT or bus rapid transit while exploring and supporting other transit modes and infrastructure for this corridor. Some of the supporting comments from the discussion are listed on the right and include that low demand for rail and dedicated BRT in the planning horizon, as noted, as well as considering that active rail line that exists in Hugo today and extends down through White Bear Lake. A big, a lot of comments around a desire to support transit in Washington County communities that are scaled and determined based on local needs versus solely considering these fixed-line routes that kind of get people to and from, you know, Minneapolis and St. Paul. And lastly, a desire to support local planning initiatives and development goals in our Washington County communities. In this case, that certainly Hugo applies to Hugo and Forest Lake. Before opening up for kind of questions and comments, I did quickly want to touch on next steps to note that we are working with Ramsey County staff to identify when the next Rush Line Task Force meeting will occur in order to have a similar discussion with the communities along the broader corridor. After we confirm our approach to transit planning in this corridor, we will proceed in completing our visioning process with Hugo and continue outlining that jurisdictional transfer plan with both cities and with MINDOT. And with that, I'm happy to stand for questions or any comments that the council may have.
Thank you, Maddy. Council, what questions do we have? Let's just open it up. Any questions or items of feedback?
I'm not sure where this fits in discussion, but just something that comes to mind. You know, Commissioner Miron and I have had a number of conversations about just important for Forest Lake to be at the table related to Rush Line when Rush Line was under consideration because of transit dollars that we pay into that system. And I believe those are led through the county. This is maybe a little bit off-topic, but I'm interested at some point of just understanding impact of those transit dollars now that the plan has shifted, and just what does that mean for us as we are, you know, doing our own planning and thinking about where those dollars are going and are we? I know we've had some city staff conversations with Met Council or Met Transit on kind of the bus lines that, you know, had kind of stalled out after the pandemic, and we, you know, still haven't come back to that regular line of service. Does this, I guess, the funding behind these plans, is that also part of the conversation that the county is engaging in, or does this fit somewhere else? I guess I'm interested in, it's an important topic, and I guess I'm not sure where the city is best to engage in kind of those questions. So I ask here, and certainly we can, you know, I'm open to your feedback.
Yep. I got the subtle hint that Lissa's going to cover that question.
Fabulous.
Mayor, Lissa Leitner, Planning Director for the county. There's a few layers for the funding picture here, probably three or four buckets that go into the transit. The historical one is the Capitol Transit Taxi District that Forest Lake is in, and that is typically what got the Transit Center and then that bus service. A lot of what's been driving Metro Transit's lack of bringing back express buses has been actually driver shortage, not necessarily demand.
Interesting.
So the driver shortage is, we just found out that I think they're like exactly at the staff they need if everybody shows up to work that day for both light rail and buses, but that has gotten much, much better. And so in these, the county has been a very broken record to make sure that Metro Transit is well-aware that our expectation is that service comes back. While the downtown markets have, of course, declined, we do know if you've been downtown in the, especially midweek, it is pretty dang busy and traffic is back. So that's a piece of it. And a big piece of that, though, is the fact that we know our communities are paying into this and seeing no service, which is a major issue. The other piece that you might be referencing is the state legislature passed a 3/4% sales tax that is region-wide. And so even communities, say for Scandia, for example, that isn't in the Capitol Transit District, now their sales tax is going into that 3/4% sales tax to the region. Most of that goes to Metro Transit. Once again, been a very broken record. I know there was a meeting recently with city staff, as well of Lions Club and a lot of other organizations with Metro Transit. And part of that was talking about if this entire county is paying into this, we expect to see some level of service. But a lot of that was discussed on these modes, like Maddy was discussing, this on-demand microtransit-type services or loops or something that more fits the community as opposed to these fixed routes that we've seen don't have the ridership to back how expensive the capital cost is. The last piece of that bucket I will note is of that 3/4% sales tax, there is 17% of that will go to all metro counties, and 17% of that 17% can be used for the counties on transit. So in 2024, that's about $1 million for Washington County that, of course, will increase. Our county board is having a workshop later in December to discuss some options. Of course, the meeting with Forest Lake, as well as your Lions, et cetera, was great timing for us to be able to hear what local issues are, and so some of that conversation will be brought back, but the county board will be discussing that. But a lot of that is around the fact that, for good or bad, fixed route transit up into this area, the cost and the ridership just isn't there, but we absolutely know the needs to move people in the communities that don't have access to a car, can't drive, can't afford it, et cetera, is 100% needed. And so we're both pressuring the council, Met Council, Metro Transit, as well as having this discussion with our partners in different departments of the county, as well as city and the board later. So it was a very long-winded answer, but the layers of transit funding are deep.
Thank you. It is complex. Thank you.
Council, other questions?
I'll give us an idea where our money's going anyways.
Yeah, that's right. More specifically, so on target for a 61, I appreciate your exploring options for turnback from the state for that corridor. Is there anything we can do as a city to support that, to be further engaged? I guess we're always open to feedback on, I understand it's a lengthy process, multiple layers. Is there anything that you would need from us in particular we should be doing as both council and staff to kind of prepare for that or to have the right level of input?
Right. We certainly, as I mentioned, we have had an initial meeting with city staff, Forest Lake city staff, about that jurisdictional transfer piece of it. We are kind of at the very front end of that, right? We were kind of working through this Hugo visioning piece, figuring out this transit component is something we sort of still need to wrestle with and kind of figure out. But then we'll be moving solidly into that jurisdictional transfer planning component. I think certainly the best way to be involved in that, at least at the outset, is to have kind of staff-level communication and coordination, just to make sure that when we are coordinating with MINDOT, we're representing the needs of the corridor accurately in having those conversations. And then we certainly are happy to work with staff, and your city staff would take their recommendations on how often they would like us to come back to you to provide any updates or run any potential scenarios past the city council.
Excellent. Helpful. Go ahead.
And what is it realistic, what timeframe? I mean, we like 10 years out, five years out, like any idea?
I'll give the same answer Lissa would give if she came up, is it's unknown at this point. I think this corridor has been identified for a turnback to the county since like 1993, which I think that document had some dates for when it should be completed by, which are well-passed. So I think that will be, I think that will come down to discussions with MINDOT on some of their priorities, some of the county's priorities, and kind of working through what that timing might look like.
Is there alignment between MINDOT and Washington County that a turnback is a positive for both parties? I mean, I know there's 1,000 details below that, but overall, is there support, seem to be support on both sides?
Yeah, yep, there's certainly agreement. MINDOT would like to turn the road back to the county, and from the county side, we have it included in several existing planning documents that it's on the list of roads to come to the county.
Fair, fair. As you can imagine, 61 is highly impactful to our community. We have all sorts of thoughts on, and, you know, our needs list and our request list for that is probably quite lengthy, but that will come another day. So whatever we can do in the meantime to support those efforts and to provide additional detail, we're happy to do so. I know staff's happy to do so as well. So.
Very good. Councilmember Erickson?
Just curious, the work that you guys are doing with Hugo, that visioning, how important is that to further that turnback in terms of a timeframe? Does that have any bearing?
Right. So the visioning study that we're going through with Hugo right now, the intent of that is really, I mean, I guess as it sounds, is to identify the long-term vision for Hugo. How that will play into the jurisdictional transfer piece is really in kind of understanding the needs of the corridor. So we'll have to find that right balance with MINDOT when we're having kind of these negotiations and discussions of like, this is our broad vision, our long-term vision, these are the issues that we're facing today, right? So we kind of have to have some back and forth with them to understand essentially what we can include in like our cost estimate, right? So this is, there is a transfer of funds that occurs, and that dollar amount gets identified based on the needs of the corridor. So going through that visioning process with Hugo will help us understand what those needs are that we should be considering as a part of that piece. When it comes to the segment of 61 through Forest Lake, we had several conversations with city staff when this whole thing got underway, and the general sense was that the city of Forest Lake has several existing planning documents, including your recent downtown plan that really covers like, hey, this is what we have identified for needs. So that's primarily, that and discussions with staff will be primarily what we will be using to inform that same piece for the Forest Lake section.
That was the dot I wanted to make sure that was being connected, was exactly the downtown plan and some of the specific needs on 61 that are called out, so.
Yep.
That was going to be my question, how does this affect our downtown?
Yeah.
It's too bad we didn't consider the consolidation of the trail with the 61 corridor as one unit, because I think that downtown part's broken out.
Yeah.
And then, you know, even things like, you know, width and turning lanes, and there's all sorts of detail in that plan that would be impactful to 61, so.
Good. Any other points of feedback? Any other requests of us?
Just to kind of clarify, as we're continue moving forward, is there a general comfort from the council or any additional information you would need from us if it were the case that we move forward in our transit planning of precluding that rail and dedicated BRT? Is there a general comfort level with that or additional info we can provide?
I absolutely think so. It opens up a lot more options.
Yep.
Yeah. I think the trend towards microtransit and looking for smaller point-to-point options rather than large-scale infrastructure is just trends. And I know traffic has returned to something pre-pandemic numbers, but work-from-home options are still, they're not going away, and so us continuing to have. The one thing I would maybe, this is a little off-topic, but something that is always a challenge in Forest Lake whenever we're talking about transit is inter-county situations because of our proximity to Fairview in Wyoming and also some of the assisted-living nursing home facilities in Chisago County as well. It's just always something that we need on the table. But specific to, you know, your question on the slide, I also would agree that precluding rail dedicated BRT is seeming to be the right option.
Councilmember Hus, or Roberts or Valente, anything further to add?
Has there been any conversation with Chisago County at all? With you folks, I mean, two separate issues, but.
Right. To date for this project specifically, we have not had any conversations with Chisago County. As I noted, we are working with Ramsey County staff, who they kind of organize the Rush Line Task Force, which includes Chisago County and the cities from here to Hinkley. So we are trying to coordinate with them to understand when that next Rush Line Task Force meeting will occur so that we can get some input from other communities along the corridor.
Thanks.
Well, thank you for the work and thank you for being here. Opportunity to provide some feedback, much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Commissioner Miron, always good to see you. Thank you. Okay. Should we move to our next agenda item, which is Open Forum? Open Forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. We do have a number of people signed up for Open Forum today. We'll just start at the top. Is it Gary Roscos, Roscos? I might be mispronouncing your name. If you could just approach the podium, and if you could start with your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Gary Roscos. I live at 23410 Jamaica Avenue, north in Forest Lake, it's the other side of the lake. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to address a letter I got, which opens up a bit of a grievance that I've had with the city for a while regarding utility billing. We are... We are charged for utilities, even though we do not receive any utility services from the city. And, you know, in particular sewer and water where we provide, you know, I've lived in this residence for 22 years, providing our private septic and water system and maintaining it for 22 years has cost us on the order of $50,000. So having the city come to us and and charge us for water and sewer for services that we aren't, you know, receiving any benefit for is kind of a tough pill to swallow. We were told that at one point that it may be part of the expenses of maintaining the watershed. And I can say that in 22 years, the watershed facilities adjacent to our property have not been touched. You know, we are out there trying to clear culverts of bicycles and et cetera to try to maintain some of that infrastructure personally. And I wanted to make sure I had an opportunity. The letter gave me an opportunity to speak and I wanted to make sure that we were heard before we paid our bill.
Understood.
So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next, we have Father Daniel Bodine. Welcome.
Thank you. Father Daniel Bodine, address is 1250 South Shore Drive, Forest Lake. Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity to come this evening to speak. I'd like to speak a little bit about the development of Bell's Park and the issue with the parking lot at St. Peter's Catholic Church. This issue has been addressed before with the city, issues and concerns with parking. As you go forward with the development of that park, I see that the one baseball diamond has been turned over to green space and has been planted with grass. And we know that the human condition is to go from the shortest distance from point A to point B. So there are a number of people who do use the other baseball diamond that is currently there. And of course, the shortest distance is our parking lot to that baseball diamond. Also too, we know the winter months are coming and there is a sledding hill there. Of course, the shortest distance for the parking lot. Our parking lot to the sledding hill is going to be where people are going to park. The tennis courts are another highly-used service that's provided by the park. And again, people are going to park the shortest distance. So our parking lot is being used extensively. And I want to, I'd like to know what the city is doing as far as parking and if there is any compensation to our parish for the use of that parking lot, our parking lot. The other thing too is not only the parking, but the amount of trash that's being produced. Daily in the summer months, we have to go out there and pick up plastic bottles, wrappers, containers from fast food developments here in the city. And it's a constant issue for us and we're wondering what can be done about it. The other thing too is the use of the park after park hours. There are several people who are parking out there and using the park for whatever reason, I don't know. But they are out there using again our parking lot. And it's an issue, a concern for safety for people and and our parking lot as well. So I would hope that the city could maybe get back to us. I know we have expressed concerns and we have not heard anything back. But again, please take this under consideration because if it continues to be an issue, we will have to close our parking lot off for parking for Bell's Park because we can no longer continue with the amount of usage and the amount of garbage that's being produced and the safety issues that are of concern with people being there late at night. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Karen Moorhead.
Good evening, Karen Moorhead, 943 Southeast 12th Avenue, Forest Lake. Mayor and City Council, I don't have to speak much tonight because you've heard me before. The problem is I haven't heard from you. So it was a year ago when five out of seven of us resigned from the park lakes and trails. At that time, we thought we had done a pretty good job of being a commission and working hard with the city and doing our job. So we thought for sure there might be someone who was interested to know why five out of seven would quit all at one time. It was crickets at that time. I did run into Abby shortly after that. She was brand new. And the only comment we got to talk about that day was that they're going to do a different kind of commission. And I said, well, of course, then they'd want to know from the five out of seven that resigned, what could be done differently to make it a better commission? Crickets, nothing. About four years, four months ago, I was beside you, before you again, to let you know the concern of Forest Lake residents when you get treated like that. And people talk, so they all know. And they ask, you know, what are they going to do? What, so all of a sudden Bell's Park comes up? And I get a lot of questions because I've been with the park situation for about 30 years. I don't know. I have no idea, no plan, no vetting. As far as I know, there's been nothing in the paper. And now I find out that tonight you're going to be voting on up or down. And I'm here to say I'm sad to say I'm not going to be in favor of moving forward, even though it's been three years behind that we should have been on this and getting it done. But tonight I stand here to say, no, I don't think you've had enough community input. You have not had a commission. You've not asked anybody who was on the commission. And so I I reached out tonight to one of the two that stayed with the commission. I thought, well, surely those two were being asked. He was absolutely dumbfounded that this was coming to be. He has had no calls, no questions. He's not been invited to a meeting. He was asked to go to one meeting on some other issue and there was a school thing. He couldn't make it. So he again was as perplexed as I am as to what in the world is wrong with the community that you don't care to ask them their opinion? Now, I wouldn't have even known this until Father Bodine mentioned that he had not had this contract yet between the city and the parking. That started, I bet, three years ago. I don't know, some of the kids that were designing that park are graduating college now. So it's been a long time. But at that time, we were trying to get together a plan for the parking lot with the with the church as well as the park. Nothing has been done. Nothing has been done with that. And here we are trying to ask a council to vote up and down when you may have to park who knows where. Certainly, South Shore isn't going to take anymore. 11th can't take anymore. So if you don't have the church parking lot and a really nice agreement with them for a partnership, I don't know where you're going to put the cars for your brand-new park. And it reminded me of another thing similar when Castlewood was before the council. They forgot to ask the neighbor, Max, about the condition of building a brand-new building next, which could possibly have been competition. And again, didn't ask the neighbor for any kind of consideration before it was done. So you didn't learn then. It doesn't look like you're learning now. So I'm hoping that something can be done tonight that can delay it until a community can vent this whole, it's a lot of money. I don't know, $2 million maybe? And when you're making those kind of decisions, I think you'd like to have the the public behind you. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby, do we have anybody online for open forum?
Yes, we do. I am going to unmute. Terri Steenblock, can you?
Terri, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes. You sound good.
Awesome. Thank you. I was looking for the meeting online tonight and I noticed, excuse me, I noticed a Zoom option, so I thought I would call in. I did send you all an email, but I'd like to take a moment to read my email since I am able to at least virtually be connected today.
Terrific.
So due to an injury, I wasn't able to be there in person. And I did want to share my thoughts at the open forum. As as the former Parks Commissioner, it saddens me to have to send this email, but I think that it's the most prudent decision. And I hope at some point the city takes seriously the feedback of the citizens and the commissions that you have or have had in the past. As you know, you have had a Parks, you have not had a Parks Commission for about a year now. And it was approximately a year ago that most of us resigned. And we sent you a letter advising the reasons for the commission resignations. We were never contacted in relation to the feedback we provided or asked to discuss it with the mayor or any other member of the then city council. Can you, can you still hear me?
We can hear you. Yep.
Okay. And while I cannot confirm this, I suspect that part of the reason for this was because city leadership was happy they no longer had the obstacle of a citizens' commission to provide advice and direction that did not align with their visions. In fact, shortly after us resigning, they significantly changed the ordinance in relation to our commission. The loss of this commission has resulted in the loss of a commission that could review and vet issues, proposals and projects, and make recommendations prior to them coming to the council. Without a commission, you as a city council member are asked to implement recommendations that are coming solely from city leadership without the consideration of the citizens of Forest Lake. As you know, the subject of Bell's Park has been an ongoing issue dating back to at least 2017. And as we noted in our resignation letter, the commission had made decisions on the original plan of Bell's and we were waiting for an update only to be told by community members it was on the council agenda without any conversations with us first. We questioned what was so urgent at that point that it had to be pushed to this council meeting before providing the commission with an update and the opportunity to chime in on that proposal. In watching the city council meeting where this was discussed, Abby left out some key details the commission articulated on several occasions, things such as no sprinkler system and being sure not to remove the fencing because we were concerned about safety issues. She had to be prompted by Councilmember Beistrum to ask about these things and she still admitted one piece of that conversation during the council meeting. Having a plan go to the council that was not reflective of the commission and the feedback we provided was done intentionally to align with city leadership desires versus the feedback of the commission. And it's disappointing to say the least, and it demonstrates the city leadership is driving this project. They are hoping by creating an emergency for you all tonight, as reflected in Dave Adams' memo, basically act now or it will cost you, that that you will be pushed into making a decision. Bring up the project one day, don't mention it again for months on end, and now all of a sudden it's time to spend money. In reviewing the plans attached, they do not align with the original feedback that was provided by the commission, nor do they align with a copy provided in January of 2022 to the commission. This is even further indicative of a project that is city-driven. The phases in Dave's memo do not align with phases that were brought forward to the commission either. And it saddens me to say this, but I recommend the city backburner this project and vote no in favor of spending the money until the city administration can exercise what we've asked for on many occasions, which is transparency and respect. I urge you to not react to the city staff urgency because their urgency is not this council's emergency. And I highly recommend when you decide to move forward with this initiative again, you engage citizens of this community. You had a full Parks Commission resign and you swept it under the rug. And I can tell you with great confidence, an entire commission does not resign when the leadership is transparent, respectful and engaged. The city leadership has eroded the trust in this commission and frankly, in the citizens of Forest Lake in general. And use this as an opportunity to deny approval of the significant investment in Bell's Park at this time and require your city administrator to notify the DNR and make those funds available to another community who engages their commissioners, works in a transparent manner and has effective leadership to get a project done. The $250,000 that you've already paid to Bolton Bank should be captured. And when this project comes back around, there should be no need to use their consulting services for the initiative. And in closing, I've said this before and I'll say it again, there's a serious leadership problem within the city. Some of the core functions of government leaders are to establish trust, engage the community and promote transparency. And the current city of Forest Lake environment is one of act now before citizens put two and two together. And as a council, you have a responsibility to act in a prudent and fiscally responsible manner. And I would share, as it relates to acting in a prudent and fiscally responsible manner, that applies to the budget as well. And when I look at things that are spent in the budget, I question why the city administrator has to have a consultant come in and we have to pay a consultant when they should be capable of identifying what is needed for your organization. We're paying for things like lighting of the bridge. I don't know if somebody donated that money or not, but when you look at the budget, there's a line item for that. It is ridiculous. I talked to you all a couple of years ago when we hired the economic development position. And I looked at that PD and I walked through it line by line with you to question, why isn't the city manager doing this? Or why isn't the assistant city manager doing this? And if they're not doing this, who's going to do it? And what's our return on investment going to be in relation to if we hire this position? As far as I know, we haven't had a return on investment in that position because I don't see new businesses clamoring to come to Forest Lake. So as you look at the budget, you're top-heavy and you need to take that into consideration as well. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on these two subjects. I'm disheartened to have to say vote no to Bell's Park, but time to take a step back and evaluate leadership and invest funds wisely.
Thank you, Terri. Abby, is there anybody else online?
We also have Kim Carlson. Kim, if you'd like to speak, go ahead and unmute yourself. Doesn't look like Kim wants to speak tonight.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in open forum? All right, we will close open forum and bring agenda back to council.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we go to closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05, Subchapter 3B, for confidential attorney-client discussion regarding pending litigation case Lakeview Farms of Forest Lake LLC versus Forest Hills Farms Owners Association and the City of Forest Lake, 82-CV-19-4630, after which we will return to council chambers to continue with tonight's agenda.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we're in closed session.
I won't abstain. I just, for the record, I am a member of the Forest Hills Farms homeowners association will not be present at the closed session.
Thank you, Councilmember Roberts. All right, we are in closed session. Okay, I would move that we reopen tonight's city council meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and we are back in open session. We are going to move into our first agenda item of the evening, which is Agenda Item 8, the Lakeview Farms settlement agreement. And Amanda.
Thank you, Honor Council. In your packet this evening is a settlement agreement related to ongoing litigation that the city has been involved in for a couple of years. It is relating to a property boundary line dispute between a property owner, the city, and then a third property owner. In your, in the settlement agreement, it's a very standard settlement agreement whereby the three parties have come to agree that the lot line will be shifted. A portion of what is currently city-owned property will be moving to the property owner to the north. In addition, a portion of the adjacent property will also be moving to their property to the north. Included in the settlement agreement is the standard release language where all the parties are releasing each other from, you know, any claims related to this matter. In addition to that, as exhibits are legal descriptions and surveys of the new, the new parcels that will be created as a result of this, as well as the zoning applications necessary to effectuate that change in ownership. In addition, one of the other property owners, the Forest Hills Farm Owners Association, uses a portion of city property to store docks and access boat slips. As a part of this package agreement, we are giving them an encroachment agreement, which will allow them to continue to use the outlaw that is owned by the city to store docks and access their boat slips. I recommend that council approve the settlement agreement as it is in your packet. And I would be open for questions, but if there are none, look for a motion to approve the settlement agreement. agreement.
Very good. Thank you, Amanda. I would move that council approve the Lakeview Farms settlement agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstentions?
Staying.
One abstention. Thank you. We are going to move into our consent agenda, council, this evening, for your consideration are consent agenda, consent agenda items 9A through H, and then J and K, and I'll note for the record that item I has been removed, and K has three parts to it. Is there a second for the consent?
Second.
Motion, motion for the consent agenda, a second from councilmember Erickson. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and consent agenda is approved. All right, we'll move to our regular agenda. First item for our regular agenda is item 10A, which is consideration of resolution 11272301, ordering certification of delinquent utility accounts. And who's walking us through? Kevin, thank you. Kevin, go ahead.
Madam Mayor and city council, in front of you is a resolution for certification of 2023 delinquent utility accounts. This is an annual certification process where amounts that are unpaid on utility bills are certified to property taxes. Affected utility accounts and owners were notified via letter that was mailed out earlier this month of any pending certification going to taxes. With that, this list right now is the accounts that were affected by that. There are, there are payments that have been being made. Those, the updated amount will be brought forward to city council for that final amount at the next scheduled city council meeting on December 11th. So to go along with approval of this resolution, there's also required to hold a public hearing where any citizens can come in to voice their concerns regarding any assessment that they, that is pending.
Thank you, Kevin. Before we open public hearing, any questions? Councilmember Erickson?
I have one. I noticed there's one that's a pretty significant amount of over $30,000. I've got to believe that's a commercial property. There was some billing irregularities in the past we've talked about. Is this one that maybe got caught up in that, or?
This is a property that we've made multiple attempts to get ahold of them, to rectify the issue, to get them to pay, to make sure if they have any questions on amounts that have been unpaid regarding some issues with their, with their utility account, and we have not been able to make contact with them. So therefore, we have sent them now this letter saying that they will be sent to certify taxes, and not specifically looked at that account to see if they have indeed paid or had contact has been made. But yes, that does go back to some issues with their billing.
And just to clarify, so there is still an opportunity, should they reach out to make that, make, get that corrected if needed?
Correct, yes. So the amounts included in the packet includes the principal amount plus the 18% fee that would be sent. If they do come in and pay before it gets sent to the county for taxes, there is no 18% fee. That is only if they get sent to the county.
Has this property been an issue in the past? Because it seemed like we always have one or two like that.
I would not, I would have to look specifically into that property to see if they've been...
Just curious, because it seems like we always have one or two of those really high ones that are...
There usually, there are some accounts that always just don't pay their utility accounts, and they always get certified to property taxes. That's how some residents or commercial properties do their business. We just look at as if we haven't, if they haven't paid, that we give them notice that, letting them know that they haven't paid. They have time to come and rectify the issue, to pay that before it goes to the county. They come and pay, we take it off, doesn't go to taxes, and we move forward, and if not, then it gets sent to taxes.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions before we open up public hearing? All right, as Kevin mentioned, we do have a public hearing scheduled on this item. I will open that public hearing now. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this topic, please come forward, and public hearing is open. Abby, do we have anybody else online that may want to speak?
Only if Kim or Terri would like to speak to unmute themselves. It doesn't look like that.
All right. Ask again, is there anybody that would like to speak in the public hearing related to the delinquent utility accounts? All right, seeing nobody come forward, we'll close public hearing and bring conversation back to council. Council, any final questions before we consider a motion? All right, I'm ready for a motion if anyone's ready.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 11-27-23-01, ordering the certification of the delinquent utility accounts.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion from councilmember Husnick, a second from councilmember Valento. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Our next item is resolution 11272305, accepting donations for hometown holiday, and Abby...
I'll present this, Mayor Bay. Members of the council, the city has received donations from Excel Energy, LaBelle Real Estate Group, I Smile Orthodontics, Carney Insurance Services, and Kodiak Coffee for hometown holiday this Friday. For you, as resolution 11272305, staff recommends you approve with gratitude.
Thank you, Abby. I would move that we approve with gratitude, resolution 11272305, accepting donations for hometown holiday. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second from councilmember Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Okay, our next item this evening is consideration of Belts Park. We do have two items on the agenda for consideration. My recommendation is that we kind of take the conversation in whole, have conversations about kind of both items together, and then we can, we can decide how to proceed. Does that make some sense? All right, and David, looks like you're ready to kick us off.
Yep. So, Madam Mayor and council, as my moment kind of goes through, this has been dating back to about 2018, or the resident pointed out, 2017, I guess. I kind of gave a brief timeline of the last, since January of 2022, so about the last two years of kind of how we progressed through that, that project. So it's kind of been ongoing every month. This has been progressing towards this point until we had 100% plans in September, and it went out for bid in October. So bid opening was November 9th. There were some, a lot of questions with the pavilion, as it was written in the project manual, and as you can kind of see from the bids, it ranged from as low as just a little under $400,000 up to 1.5 million. So there's something that wasn't reading quite right to get that bit far of a spread. So that was somewhat concerning. We did pull it out as an alternate, so that would be something you could accept or not accept. At the end of the day, the bids, the bids came in, the base bid, the lowest base bid was about $40,000, just a little under $40,000 over budget, and if you do take the base bid and the alternate together, it'd be about $125,000 under budget. So both of those did not hit the mark. We're just looking for direction tonight. I mean, typically, you come and say, yep, we're, we're under project bid, we did a great job, and let's go with the project. But I think, being the budget season, and we're looking, you know, we're faced a pretty high percentage of levy increase, it's hard to ask for another $125,000 of budget. So there's a bunch of options. You could, you could accept the, the base bid and reject, which would be the site work, and you could reject the pavilion, you could accept both of them, or you could throw both of the bids out and either rebid at a later date, or, you know, try to alter, alter what it is. So a lot of the work, that site work is ADA compliant stuff that you can't really take out or put in. It's, you know, sidewalks and fed ramps and, you know, ways to access the equipment. So that's one, one tough thing that I don't know how much more you can, you can take off that site work. And then the second part of the memo is the playground, so that goes hand in hand with, with the site work. So you could accept the site work and the playground, you just won't have a pavilion built, or again, you could table everything and rethink this. So we're kind of all, staff is looking for suggestions, discussion, and, and direction to, to see where you want us to go with this. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Dave. Councilmembers, questions, thoughts, feedback? Who wants to kick us off? You all want to start?
The timing is sure wrong right now, that's for sure. As far as I'm concerned.
So maybe just a couple thoughts to kick us off. When multiple parties from multiple directions and multiple perspectives are saying, maybe this isn't the right time for this project, for a number of reasons, we have to start to listen to that. This project is challenging in a whole host of ways, and this project has spanned multiple councils, multiple budget cycles, the project itself is tiered, planned over multiple years of construction phases, and more recently, I think councils had a really robust discussion on where we are with tenure plan and where we are with overall general fund appetite. And all of this is kind of coming together at the same time, which makes this both timely and challenging. Personally, I'll, I'll just start with, I have just a lot of reservations about this project. I voted for the grant. I voted that we, we solicit the grant. I voted that we approve the grant. I've voted for the grant multiple times, but at the end of the day, there seems to be some elements of the grant that are driving these project costs beyond what I think we have an appetite for, and probably beyond what is absolutely necessary for a playground of this size in its location in Forest Lake at this time. And so, you know, there's, I think, been some feedback of what's the hurry, and sometimes because we got out ahead of this grant, everyone's working in due diligence to try to use those funds and be good stewards of those funds, but it has resulted in a project that is very large and where we have some concerns over everything from parking to footprint to safety, that now all of those pieces come together in the middle of us also having a very large budget conversation, and it just seems like we need to take a pause. There's my kickoff. Who wants to take the ball next?
I would, I would second a lot of those thoughts. I, I think, you know, what it really comes down to for me is that we don't have a park commission in place, and I really, I'm challenged with that based on some of the feedback we heard tonight and other feedback I've heard since being on the council. That happened about the time, you know, during the last election period, and new to this, and I just, I think it's a disservice to the community and to those board members that we don't have someone seated, and no one did reach out to them to find out why, why did it, why did it upset them that much when you have people who are so dedicated to this community? Just be done. That, I know some of these individuals, this town means everything to them, and I, I think that, that we owe that to the community to not do anything here until we get a commission in place. I feel strongly about that. And, and that's for me, I, I appreciate the work the staff's done in this, into this. I think at some point, we can have a really good project that's a park that is used quite a bit. There's a lot of potential there. I think we, obviously, we need to work with St. Peter's Parish to get at some parking there. I made the comment at the workshop, we're going to spend $2 million, and we have no parking for a park. I get it's, it's a neighborhood park, so there's a lot of people walking, but I, I'm challenged with that as well.
Yeah, and I would, I mean, I would just, you know, kind of echo the comments that have been said, but I, you know, last week, we talked a lot about Fenway, and if we're going to make a major investment in our city's parks, I mean, that's a place that I think is used a lot more, and so, you know, if we're going to invest in, in parks, let's, let's look at that, and I agree that, I mean, we should have a commission and that should be, you know, community-led.
Any other points of comment, feedback?
When this all started, it was starting with a $300,000 grant from the DNR, which sounded okay, but then the thing just kind of kept ballooning out of shape, and it was never intended to be this from day one. And so, right now, I think it's time to fall back and regroup.
I will, I will also say, I, I'm, I wish we had a park commission that was in place. However, I also believe that we owe to a future park commission an understanding of what does the plan look like related to long-term park funding, and that has been a conversation that we've had some really good conversations on this year as part of that tenure plan. I think there is an underlying, there's an underlying challenge related to this park, this size, the budget, related to overall park funding, and what does a long-term park plan look like? What does the funding of that look like, and how does that impact our general fund? We are now at the spot with parks that we were maybe three years ago with streets, where we're starting to have a better understanding of what the impact is and how all of those pieces fit together. But if a, if a park commission is going to be in place, they need, they need to understand, and, and we owe it to them of what is that funding? And one of the fundamental feedback we, I received in those resignation letters was around concerns on what are we being asked to do? And I think that's a fair question, and we owe that of what is our long-term commitment related to, are we just doing maintenance? Are we doing park development? And what does that plan look like? And we've got great community members that want to provide feedback to that and want to, and want to be part of that process, but we as a, as city council need to be committed to that long-term funding strategy. I think we're a lot closer, but that's been an evolution, and because two years ago, our long-term commitment was virtually zero. We were just completely dependent on development dollars for new, and that does okay until it doesn't, and we're at that spot where that's no longer enough, and I think we need to be part of setting what is our commitment to that tenure plan, and once, and I think we're, we've made good progress, but that is a key input point that then, okay, great, that is the plan, the community's rallied around that, that is kind of the budget parameters that we're looking for. Are we talking about a $500,000 park, or are we talking about a $2 million park? We can, you know, go to the community now and get that input, but we have to be committed to some base level funding, and I think we're close, but to me, that's been a missing element on why I've been very hesitant to bring a new group together. Let's remember, this will be the third restart of a park board. This wasn't the first park board or park commission that has turned, you know, had almost nearly 100% turnover. We've done this a couple of times, and so if we're going to put in a third, and we should, let's do it right and with the, the resources that they need, and I think, you know, some commitment to long-term funding, so that guides the park plan. Those pieces need to go together. So I, I think, you know, council's done a lot of work on that this year. We're getting up, you know, we're having a lot of budget conversations. I think we're a lot closer, and I really look forward to seating a new commission.
I would tend to agree that the financial part is a big piece of it, but also just being ambassadors of the city, helping out at Arts of the Park, doing the corn feed, that's something we've missed this last year.
I would agree.
I understand the money piece of it, but, you know, as, as early as in two weeks, we'll have a dollar amount that they'll have to work with, and we have a tenure plan with some dollars there. So to your point, we have made some strides, but it's just not all about the, the money.
Understood. Understood.
I think with that too, it's about prioritizing parks, and the conversation has always been that where is the money for the parks? And I think that's really started the last couple of years, and that's important, but on top of that, not only is it about money, but it's with that park commission, getting them all as a collective, discussing the priorities of parks and where do we want that within the next year, five years, 10 years, et cetera, and prioritizing, do we want to put that money towards Fenway, Belts? Do we have other places in mind? And so I just think creating a plan that suits the city.
Well, so tonight we have before us a, a plan and proposals in front of us related to Belts Park, both for site plan as well as equipment. Based on the feedback we've had and recent conversations related to just overall budget and prioritization... I think we need to take a pause. And I, I think we should, so there's some things that need to, what does pause look like? There's some things that need to be defined. I would, I, I'm just, I'm not making a motion, I'm just kind of tossing out some, kind of a punch list of things that we would need to consider. There is a grant that we have been granted that we would need to somehow unwind from. And then to, just think about what's next. There are some site items that have happened with Belts Park, some fencing that's been removed, some groundwork that has been done. I think we should ask staff to kind of come with a plan of what does the next three, three, four months look like for Belts Park? Until we're able to kind of get back into project mode of what might, kind of a secondary project look like? Or a version two, let's not call it secondary, but, you know, 2.0 Belts Park, what that might look like. I think there's some staff work to tee that up, but I'm open to council's thoughts on what that looks like.
Other than that list is reach out to St. Peters, because there's going to be snow falling eventually. And getting some sort of an agreement in place or conversation going about parking, I think it'd be critical.
I have a question on that. Have we ever, have we had a parking, have we had a parking agreement in place that has expired? Or have we just never had a parking agreement or?
There's been no parking agreement. We have contacted St. Peters in the past and we're working towards an agreement somewhere that level that, something happened there, whether it's which side, I can't say which side.
Fair.
There was a framework of an agreement at one point.
But we've never had a parking agreement, okay.
Aside from sledding, I don't see much happening at Belts Park in the next six months, maybe five. So would that be time to possibly engage, you know, community members and kind of see what would a plan be? Be that we would, you know, when the ground thaws in the spring, that we'd be able to do something with? In the meantime, we'll obviously do skating.
And we will continue with the winter events. I think what we'll do is next Monday at the budget, we'll kind of give, try to give you a better update on Belts Park and what we think should happen. There are some maintenance issues now that we know we need to take care of, no matter what the input is. But some, like the basketball courts got huge cracks, and maybe we should address repairing some of that stuff. And then take a break and see what else in the park, you know, redo what re-needs, maintenance-wise, safety-wise, which is both of those tennis courts and the basketball courts. But other than that, regroup and when the park commissions reform, bring the rest of Belt Park to them and see where, how that lands in the series of parks, whether it Fenway goes first and things like that. But we can have something, at least an idea next, next Monday for you. We'll, we'll put that as a small topic for the budget discussion next, next week.
Any other punchless items anyone would add to that, kind of request of things to be considered by staff?
Did, under the grant, I know we talked a little bit in the workshop last week, there was some conversation as to how long we can hold that grant before it has to be put back? Does a project need to start? I don't know if anyone's, did he?
At this point, we'll return the grant, based on what the requirements of the grant are, based on the plan that we submitted for the grant, which was both approved by the park board and the council at the time. There are elements in there, and it's based on ADA and accessibility that we just can't do at this point, so that grant will have to go back.
There's the catch.
This may be a point of unnecessary formality, but it seems to me that if council approved the grant, I think we should bring it back before council to return it. Because I think that there is a, I think we want, I'd like to be very clear on why we're returning it. And I, I think it would be beneficial to make sure that council's on the same page as to why we're returning it. There's lots of reasons why we aren't potentially doing this project. But I think for us to articulate back into what it was about the scope of the grant and what it required of a project of size and scale and budget impact, I think it would be beneficial for us to just make sure that council's on the same page as to why we are returning that grant.
And we'll look at the mechanism.
Do that through some official council action. Just, I, I think that would be prudent of just making sure we're on the same page as to, while we can all talk about why maybe we're putting a pause on the project, the actual return of the grant funds, I think, should have some council action.
We'll take a look and see what that might look like.
Just another question, so this is-
To be clear, the commission did not approve the copy that was used for the grant. We had to ask afterwards what was used. So just to be clear, we did not see the, the plan that was utilized for the grant and have the opportunity to approve it ahead of time.
So, I appreciate the feedback, we're not in public comment period, but appreciate the feedback. Council member.
So, a question, this would be for you, Ryan. Any of the, the work that's been done on the engineering side? I mean, like, is it, is it like ground, like, are we starting from scratch if we were to do something? Or some of the stuff that's been done to date, be able to use as something when we do hit the reset button and do something different out here?
Well, you guys own the data that's been produced. What you want to do with that moving forward will be determined. So if you want to change or modify anything that's proposed in the plans and specs, that's something we would have to deal with in the future. Or you could, yeah, it's, I don't know what direction we're going, but you guys would have all rights to the data.
And presumably, some of that could be used for a different plan that's somewhat, maybe not similar, but just, you know, if we're talking about ball fields and irrigate, you know, irrigation or pavilion, I mean, that stuff's already, if we're doing different components of it and maybe not doing the full scope of it, I mean, some of that I would hope could still be used, the engineering pieces of it?
Yep. If you shift stuff around, then you're going to change some grades, right? So then the grading plan would change, you know, when you get into the weeds on stuff like that. But I think those are details to worry about when you guys decide what route you're going to go.
Right. I just ask because, you know, money's been spent and here we're, we're stopping it. So it's, that's, I'm not real comfortable with that, but it's better than putting, you know, bad money after worse money type thing situation.
And we, and we haven't spent that full 250,000, but like, that continued through the whole project. So that was construction management and all, and that as well. So we're not at that full amount, so there's still money left over.
Okay, good.
Dave, we have, so we have bid, we've received bids and you have a quote for the equipment, playground equipment purchase. Do you need us to make a motion to reject? Is that the proper action, if we're looking for a pause?
If you would like to reject them and then just not approving the purchase of the playground equipment.
Understood, thank you. Before we move to action, I guess any points of discussion? I, I guess I would also say just to the public and those that are watching the meeting, this conversation is very much tied in with what is being considered for budget. We do have another budget workshop scheduled and a special meeting next Monday. That is 6:30, open to the, open to the public. And then we do have planned consideration of our budget. I'm sorry, 7 o'clock, thank you, thank you. 7 o'clock next Monday is a special meeting for budget workshop. And then we do have the first, our first meeting in December is council's first official consideration of the budget. And there is also a planned truth and taxation meeting for that, so there's plenty of opportunity for public comment. Again, I can only speak for myself, but the consideration of that full budget and the 2024 levy that is being proposed really weighs heavily into my consideration of this project. We would love to be able to do, I would love to be able to do additional playground projects and do this type of development. It is needed in our community. I think it's a question for me personally of this project at this time at this dollar amount, just makes me push pause. And so, I just want to provide that additional context. With that, and kind of back to consideration of what was on our agenda this evening, I would move that council, let me get it in front of me, I would move that council reject the bids that were submitted and also not approve the playground equipment purchase as presented in staff memos today. Is there a second?
Well, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we do have a number of budget, or I'm sorry, not budget, discussion topics on the workshop, or on the agenda this evening. As we go into these discussion items, these are intended to be more informal working sessions of council. Anything that we're talking about that requires official action will come back before council at a future meeting. And with that, let's jump right in to the first item, which is our 2024 fee schedule, proposed changes and a draft ordinance.
Yeah, before you tonight, city council is the proposed fee schedule for 2024. The majority of the changes you'll see is formatting more than anything else to make it more easily understandable. It's not only to staff, but also to residents and, and officials. Not to go through every fee, if you want to, we can, but some of the major changes include a structure for administrative citations. We talked about going down that road in 2024 to start to enforce some of our codes and, and property maintenance. That includes, that fee structure is included in, in the new fee schedule. The other, one of the other major ones is a change to the Parks and Recreation section where we've outlined a little bit better facility rentals, athletic facility rentals, tennis and pickleball courts, if somebody wants to reserve them and have them, you know, right now, they're open, first come, first served. But if somebody actually wants to reserve them, there's a small fee for those. And of course, for the arts in the park vendors. Not much has changed in planning and zoning and police. And Exhibit C, for the last highlight really, it shows the next three years of water rates and water and sewer and stormwater rates. Traditionally, we have, have that on a three-year rotating schedule that's updated every year depending on what budgetary needs are, what expenditure needs are. I know this is a lot and a lot of detail. If you have questions or want clarification, please let us know. We can go through this or try to highlight some more things or answer your question today. Or go back on next Monday and revisit the schedule.
Council, anything jump out as points of concern or feedback before we consider for adoption? Yep, Council member Valenta.
I brought up before that variances in the fee schedule for Forest Lake is an even 500 across the board. And I've noticed for other cities, they, like for most of the cities surrounding us, they, there's two categories of commercial and residential. And usually, like ours is 500, and I think there's some, like even Stillwater is residential would be 200, a commercial is 500. And I think White Bear was probably something similar. And so I would prefer to see that differentiated so that it's, residents aren't being just as burdened as commercial or variances.
Do you have a page, I'm scrolling and not finding.
I, I don't know the page number, but I know exactly, and I know this was brought, I think this may have been brought up at the end of last year's, when we adopted the fee schedule as well. And I had, had forgotten about that, but that's certainly something that we can look into, how we can help balance those costs that way.
It's page 168. Thank you, I just found it, thank you. Any other questions or points of feedback?
Everything seemed pretty much as was.
It's ironic, the year we make the adjustments to make it user-friendly, it makes it just challenging to review the redline version. But I appreciate the future years, this will be an easier document to review.
And the administrative citations, we had that discussion. And this fee schedule reflects the discussion we had at the council previously with the amounts and so forth.
I guess, so would it be next course of action that this would come back next council meeting for adoption as?
Yes, this will be part of the budget adoption. Historically, we do the budget, the resolution and this at the same time so that we're ready for, give us a few days to publish it and get it out and put it ready for January 1st.
Without there being any further comments here this evening, maybe next course of action is if anyone has any points of feedback they would like to see. Certainly get that into Patrick prior, in the next week or so, so that that can be considered as part of our adoption meeting, perfect. Patrick, anything else from us on that?
Not on the fee schedule, no.
All right. We're going to transition to our next topic, 11B, which is the police captain sergeant position, and Chief Peterson.
Yeah, I'm here and city council members, good evening. What I have for you tonight is a discussion on a second captain instead of a detective sergeant on my command staff in 2024. This would give, give us the opportunity for one captain who would oversee patrol operations while the second captain would oversee the administrative operations. Currently, we have had one captain since 2011, and that captain has overseen both patrol operations and administrative operations for the department. While having one captain in place has worked early on, it has become quite clear in the past few years the complexity of calls for service and the drastic policy changes for law enforcement agencies has also increased dramatically, and I don't see that subsiding anytime soon. Having a patrol captain and an administrative captain will assist in the span of control within the police operations. And sharing the duties and responsibilities is currently assigned to the one captain. I strongly believe this would also help and assist us and improve our work efficiencies in the department. This change in structure does not impact the budget, and we would stay within our current approved staffing levels of 30 FTE for 2023 and 2024. It should be noted, having two captains' positions or similar middle management positions in a law enforcement agency, our size is not a unique model by any means for the command staff structure. And as you can see in your packet, the 12 cities that we usually compare City of Forest Lake to, nine of those 12 cities have at least two middle management positions. And I believe three of them have more than two. My plan would be to start the appointment process in the next month and hope to have a captain appointed to the position in early January 2024. This would allow Captain Weiss to start training and sharing some of his current job duties and responsibilities. When Captain Weiss retires on February 29th, 2024, a second captain would be appointed to fill his vacancy. We currently have five sergeants who are very capable to fill the two proposed captains' positions. All of our sergeants have varying degrees of education, experience, and higher-level law enforcement executive trainings, which they have obtained over the years. This is the same for many of our police officers who have also attended and attained, continuing their education and attended supervisory trainings for hopes for future advancement in the department. I'm very proud of our department's level of education and training they receive year to year. And I believe we have some of the best trained personnel in our department. With the expectations of potentially five or six senior command staff and senior officers retiring in the next three to four years, we're looking at losing over 180 years of law enforcement experience. And the majority of those years are actually with the City of Forest Lake. So succession plan is, with the Forest Lake Police Department, is more important than ever than before. And so that's why I wanted to give you this topic of discussion for tonight. And of course, I'm here for any questions or clarification you may have.
Thank you, chief. Council, let's just open it up, any questions for chief or points of feedback?
Just a comment. This is an update for the council, to try to keep you in the loop on this. There may be some differences of opinion whether we should do this or not. Traditionally, in an organization like the police department, it is the chief's prerogative to reassign or to change his structure, his or her structure. Since we're not adding any body counts, we're not eliminating any body counts. This is more of a management decision, but we want to make sure that you understand what, what the vision is and why we're concerned with this. Particularly when we talk about succession planning, which we know within the next three to five years, we really need to, to have senior officers. within the next three to five years, we really need to have senior officers that can either step up permanently or at least in the interim as those positions get filled. But again, this is usually a management issue that the chief, not only this organization but other organizations, have the prerogative to change, but we want to make sure that you understand where we're going and have that discussion with you.
Appreciate that, I appreciate the opportunity, like, to stay on the same page. As I just read Chief's memo and thought about, you know, the process and what we're doing. Obviously, I'm always concerned about budget, I'm concerned about headcount. This isn't a change to the command staff count, it's not changing the number of officers that are available in patrol. This is a minor, at the surface, potentially impactful, but it's a change that the details are really in how actual job functions will be distributed between the four remaining sergeants and the two captains. That is, I think Patrick said it well, it's really details that I would rely on the chief to make. I'm not sure I have more fee, I'm not sure I have more, I have certainly lots of questions and some thoughts, but as a council, I think, I kind of step back as, if this is chief's recommendation of how the police department should be structured, I take that more, to me, that's more important than how I might feel as whether you would have two captains or we don't have a lieutenant, or, you know, there's all sorts of structures out there that we could be adopting. I'm going to rely more on chief's recommendation of how, what's the right structure for Forest Lake at this time, knowing that it's our job to, you know, appoint leadership and to, you know, approve budget, so.
You know, looking at this chart that Chief provided reflecting not only that we don't have but one middle management, we're also running a very lean staff, to credit our surrounding communities. And with all those impending retirements, I think it's more important than ever that we get the CSO program back in next year's budget conversation, for sure. But I am in full support, and I would, if we're ready, I'd make a motion that we approve the change that Chief is recommending and consider it for approval tonight.
It's just a discussion tonight.
Well, we can, it's a discussion, but a vote could be made tonight.
I would even say, I'm not sure, I appreciate counsel having an opportunity to provide feedback, but I'm not sure counsel needs to approve. And I just want to make sure that we're not acting as management. I want us to, you know, we are policymakers, we are the elected officials, we approve budget, we appoint the chief. But, and, you know, certainly are very involved in a chief hire, but below that, you know, whether, because whether we are in a two-captain position or a three-captain position, I'm just not sure that that is, and I say three captain just as, not because that structure is out there, but just it could happen. I'm just not sure that, I want that to be a council, a council has to be, has to approve that plan.
What, a vote of confidence to the chief, I mean, after?
I mean, yeah.
Since this isn't a body count addition, so there is no vote, it's not in regular session, this is just an information piece. We're looking for, I think we have the guidance that this isn't okay. We don't seem to have a major, anybody saying, no, what you're doing is ridiculous or anything like that. Not a vote to proceed, but just kind of a nod of the head to say, yeah, it sounds like a good idea. Let's trust the chief and go move forward.
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason not to trust chief. He's brought us through this department through a lot of tough times, disbandment, all that. That act of insubordination that we saw two weeks ago is ridiculous, and I think it's, this is more of a vote of confidence for the chief than anything.
Understood. Any other points, you know, Chief makes a, the comment around the number of years of experience that our department is going to be losing through retirement and attrition in the next couple of years. And again, this, many police departments and fire departments and, you know, city, you know, many departments are experiencing that same type of retirement surge that is pending. So this, you know, our department is going to be going through a number of changes. Many of our departments are going to be going through a number of changes, and I just think we need to be nimble and react to, be ready for those changes. And so I applaud the chief for, you know, having, you know, thinking about succession planning, having people experienced before those retirements happen, so that knowledge transfer can take place. Because we've got a number of organizational changes coming, and that is just part of what is happening with the number of retirements that are coming in many of our departments. And that's part of the reason why I'm resistant to council approving each one of those, because again, you know, we should be focused on overall headcount, we should be focused on overall budget. But who's sitting in what particular seat when? We don't have the management detail to fully guide that, and it's why we have leadership to lead. So, okay, any other?
Just so you know, I've talked to several people that aren't real happy about the situation, so, just so you know.
Understand. That's part of the change management we're going to have to navigate through in these upcoming changes. Any other points of feedback? Chief, any other points of feedback you'd like from us?
Nope.
Okay, very good. All right, our next discussion item, parking issues on North Shore Trail.
Mayor and council, just to have a discussion about this tonight. So, as you probably know, Pizza Pub is doing very well. So, that intern has had some parking issues out on North Shore Trail. Even if you, the updated Google Maps will show you that now too, that they're kind of starting to park on the shoulder, the lots are full. Bringing out some public safety concerns, especially when it gets to wintertime, that people won't be able to park way up on the grass anymore and will start edging out into the road. I know, I'm not going to speak for the chief, but I believe they've been getting some complaints from the neighbors just about site distance and all that. It is signed no park for a majority of it, it's a kind of a gray area in between where they are parking now. So we're just, we want council, myself, and police to kind of all be on the same page here of what we want to do here, what we want to enforce going forward, just so we all kind of know what's going on. And we're just looking for a discussion, and I mean, it's, it's a good problem to have that they're very successful, but it's, it's just going to, if we don't figure something out, it's going, I think it's going to get worse.
Is it currently marked no parking?
What was that?
Are there current signs for no parking?
There's, there's a sign right before the entrance, the, it'd be the west entrance. Then there's a sign right by the east entrance, and then there's signs on signs all the way through the parking ramp. So, I believe at one point in time, there probably was one there in between, but just not there anymore. There's no parking on the other side either, there's no parking on Inwood. A lot of that was put up just because of the boat trailer parking back in the day, when I think before even the DNR lot was redone. Maybe there's a lot more issues, but it is a tricky spot because it's right on a curve there too. So, if they do end up starting to edge out into the road, you just know your people are walking on the road and, you know, I just don't want anybody to get hurt either, and it's one of those, one of those things. So, but we also, you know, you also don't want to deter business. So it's, I guess we're just looking for direction of what, how you want us to proceed here and go. So, it's technically city right-of-way, so technically they can't be parked there, it's not parking. A lot, so what do you guys think?
How many, how many complaints, chief, would you say, or that you're aware of?
So we ran those numbers today, and it's kind of hard to figure out exactly right in that area. We've had, all along North Shore Trail this year, we've had 149 complaints for parking, but that does not, that area, we narrowed it down, and we didn't have a whole lot of time to do it, and there were 12 parking complaints in that specific area.
Since, like, September when they opened, or late August, or whatever it was?
It's a couple a week, right? For instance, they've been open. So they're on a, so they operate on a conditional use permit, is that, is that right?
That is correct, it was issued in 2007. It's been amended a few times since then, but nothing in relationship to the parking in the amendments.
But the conditional use permit, is it, it's clear on park, what's allowed for parking, is that?
I'd have to go back. I was able to, just in the time, just last week, staff had talked about it last Wednesday, we were off Thursday, Friday, I was able to pull the actual use permits themselves, I haven't gone through the file history. The very first use permit that was approved in 2007 suggests that possibly the city looked favorably upon the boat parking as a means to maybe comply with all of the parking requirements needed for the facility. I don't know that for certain, but it, in just reading the black and white documents, it seems like they never want, the city never wanted to see a reduction in the boat parking on the site, so.
Is that a realistic option of them, that boat, boat parking's location is, that launch location is not our spot? But is that a realistic alternative that they could use for overfill, or what would that look like?
I don't know. I reached out to the business owner just last week saying, hey, heads up, we're going to chat about this. I wanted to give a courtesy reach out. I also asked if they had ever reached out to the DNR. I can still say I'm new here, right? I had heard at least that the former restaurant had had maybe an agreement with the DNR. I have not reached out to the DNR. So I'm happy to help facilitate any conversations about any sort of shared parking, parking improvement options. But it is a very limited space. There's limited on the road, on the roadway, any sort of open land in the area. It's just a tight site for what is a very great business, right? That we really want to help support, so.
Dave, you mentioned no parking on Inwood as well, there's not, that's not allowed?
Not on either side, no.
Why is that, what, I know it goes back to the boat trailer thing, but is that an opportunity that gets them off North Shore? I know they're still crossing North Shore, but you can see the concern, especially when it's dark out there, you're right on the road and you're stepping out, it's, I would think it'd be a little safer to be actually on Inwood as opposed to right on North Shore.
Yeah, and I know during the summer months, I believe, how you come in and out of there, if you have cars parked there, then they can't get, boat and a trailer can't get open, I mean, it could be a seasonal thing where, you know, in the fall, you could take them out or this time of the year. But once you get back to summertime, then you'd have that, I think you need to put them back up just to make that turn.
I would also guess that, you know, with the traffic being maybe more related to snowmobile and UTVs and that, and being able to plow a pretty decent-sized lot out on the lake, that people can park vehicles out there as well. Might offset that concern about the snow and this time of year. I would, I'm guessing they would, are looking to do that already.
Are there options, so if I understood right, there's, the property owner has done some things to maybe have some temporary parking close to, on, close to the street. Are there options for that to take place, temporary parking, but it's not, it's elsewhere on the site, not so adjacent to North Shore? Is there?
There's really no onsite options, they've really maximized the site.
Everything's parking lot.
On that parking lot, as best as they can. I mean, I can go back and take a look to see what their original plan was. I think that they, former ownership had maybe even reconfigured that lot at one time to try to maximize that parking. But it's a very limited space for the size of the venue.
I would have thought there would have been more than 12 complaints, to be honest with you. I mean, that seems relatively low, not that any are good, but if there was 30 or 40 and the neighbors were just really upset, I'd be more apt to try to engage in this and try to do something, but doesn't seem like we're there right now. But the safety thing is a concern too.
I guess, yeah, I, I guess I would encourage, I guess I'd like to hear, and I don't need to personally hear, I don't need to hear in a public meeting, but I guess I'd like, I'd encourage staff to reach out to talk to the property, just to see what their plan is. And I have concerns, I'm less concerned in the summertime about the parking on the grass and the right-of-way. I don't love it, but I'm less concerned, in the winter, I'm just in the curve with people, just, it's slippery, people fall. It's right next to North Shore, which is already challenging. I just have a concern with that being the plan, and I just think, I'd like to hear what the property owner would like.
Yeah, and I think we've explored some possible options during the winter, which I think are, you know, great, great ideas. You know, I think, I think those who are parking in the grass are largely employees, you know, and so if there was other employee parking, whether it be on one of the other side streets or the, you know, the DNR lot, I think those would probably be viable options, and I think it'd be worth exploring all those for sure.
I think, I think we should encourage something other than right-of-way parking for the wintertime, but it's hard to, it's hard to know what that is, and what they're open to, and what the DNR might allow in that adjacent lot. I also, in the winter, using Inwood and kind of easing the restrictions on Inwood seems like a logical alternative. It's better than North Shore, and yes, we have some pedestrian traffic across North Shore, but again, it's, it's better than unmanaged, what might happen naturally. Let's just acknowledge the elephant in the room, the challenge is that the size of that building, if it's going to be successful of what it's, what it needs, it's going to require a lot of cars. And so it's, we want, I think everyone up here wants this to be a successful business, we don't want another empty building there. And so let's try to find some reasonable alternative that's safe. But this has been a challenge at this location for many, many, many years. And it's a nice problem to have in that we have a successful business that people want to go to, and let's try to find something that's reasonable from a parking perspective. I would think that the lot use in this wintertime, when this is more of a challenge of the adjacent DNR, that there's more of an option there in the winter, especially in the evening hours. It seems like there, it's more of a compatible use, that there might be a decent option there.
Well, we'll talk with the property owner and see if we can come up with, or he can come up with some solutions or give us a better idea. And we'll look at different things that we mentioned tonight and see where we go.
Maybe facilitate some DNR contacts if we can assist with that?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Anything else on this topic? All right. Next on our item, next on our agenda is the 2024 Board Appointments. And we included in your packet a memo from Abby. Abby, do you just kind of want to walk through what's being proposed? And maybe talk through long-term plan versus maybe an interim plan for 2024?
Sure. So as the council is aware, we rely on volunteers for our boards and commissions. And they stagger every year, and vacancies can occur annually naturally. In reviewing the 2024 boards, we have identified that there is right now currently or will be a vacancy on every single one of our commissions. As we have a vacant deputy clerk position, it took a minute to just take a look to see what's the city's process for recruiting volunteers, and that recruiting is kind of the recruiting, interviewing, appointing, onboarding. We have no formal process. The process really has just been to send an application to the mayor, and in times when we're kind of resource limited, it puts a lot of weight in just one person. And so what I have done tonight is, or what I've done is propose an option for the city for kind of standardizing this process and spreading out the roles and responsibilities between staff, elected officials as your, you are the liaison to these commissions, and then, and boards, and then the actual chairs of the boards and commissions. Assuming that those chairs know those bodies quite well, you liaisons know those bodies quite well, you actually might be in a better position to vet out good candidates.
well, you actually might be in a better position to vet out, um, good candidates that could really serve the community very well. So what I've done is propose at least a process, um, to help create a more cohesive onboarding process. Um, I'd like it, that process to be consistent every year, um, just so that we all have kind of that same, okay, we're starting the process, August, we just see who is interested in the following year, and you kind of go through that process of seeing which of the existing volunteers want to come back on, make a call for volunteers publicly through Facebook, social media, our website. Um, right now, we're a little behind the, what I would say is the proposed process, but we also, as you were reminded tonight, have an entire commission that has been sitting dormant for a year, and I didn't want to necessarily start PR processes to include all the commissions if we weren't ready, to really kind of do some quality onboarding of all of the commissions. Um, so this is before you tonight to see if it's something that the council's favorable to, for the cities to start utilizing as we work towards it, if the council are towards full appointments. If the council is favorable, uh, we'll start preparing some, just a PR for trying to get some volunteer applications in, in this next month. Um, it probably would be that we would do those interviews in July or January, July, where did, where did July go? Um, uh, to do those interviews in January, but appointments maybe just a little bit later in twenty twenty-four, um, given we are limited resource right now. So even though this does say deputy clerk, it kind of would be a, me helping with some assistance with our support staff, um, both Don, um, and also probably a little bit of Patrick, and you just never know who, who's helping out right now, so. So this is up for you for discussion, just to see what your thoughts are on the process.
I'm very open to, um, council's feedback on this, um, as I've just reflected on this process, um, over my tenure as mayor and while I was on council. Um, I, I think this is, to me, is more of a set city-led process, and I really welcome the additional, um, uh, input and the opportunity to, that, of, that the interview would provide for both the council liaison and the, um, the, the, um, commission chair. I, I just think that's an extra layer of input that has been missing. Um, there have been times where I, I know as a council member, I was being asked to approve somebody and I had never talked to them, I had had a, you know, maybe a, a resume or maybe an application as part of a packet and a mayor's recommendation, but certainly no personal knowledge to make a decision, and this just allows for a much more, um, kind of a broader web to be, it's a standard process, everyone kind of knows the timing, uh, so we potentially would have more applicants, and then an opportunity for just there to be some additional vetting and conversation between, and input between the council liaison and the chair that I just think is a much, it's a bigger process than what we've had today, but I think it's a much better process, so I support, um, kind of what's proposed, um, but I'm also open to, you know, what's going to work well for us at this time, so certainly open to feedback.
I like it, 'cause I think it starts from somewhere, 'cause before we, there was hardly a process.
Right.
As has Ben mentioned, and so I think it's, it's a good start, and it's somewhere to begin, and you know, we can always look, once we go through it a couple times, go, come back and really dive into, is this working, is it not, where, where should we go, and, but I think it's, it's a start, and we need to start somewhere.
I, I would agree. Gives a lot more broader idea, it gives the applicants a better idea too, what they're looking at.
Ultimately, you know, the appointment is still, or the approval is still a council approval, it's just kind of a broader, um, uh, there's more people involved in the process, and so I think there's just opportunity for more input.
I, I guess I would disagree a little bit, I, I think that, I think we've had some good candidates come through.
We have had good candidates, I agree a hundred percent.
And I think that, um, this really, you know, needs, I think it needs to be more council or, or mayor driven, to be honest with you, that feedback, I understand, if someone is voting on something, they don't know that person, that's part of the job of the councils, is to go, you know, this person, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on him, her, reach out to them, have that conversation, and we're told that staff is busy, overworked, this brings staff in, more duties, more responsibility for staff, I just think it needs to be more of, of the community, more of a, a council real, decision than, and I know ultimately it would be, but I just, I just, I don't see that there's a problem with how it's going right now. I mean, yeah, maybe some more guidelines about timing, 'cause that's where I think we've gotten behind on, okay, we need to have the applications open by this time, but I, I don't really see it, and I'm really, obviously newer than, than most of you on here, but I don't see what the concern is, I, I think it's not, I mean, are we not having enough applicants? Is that part of the, because then, since you're asking for an interview, if someone wants to volunteer, the time, and they have to be interviewed and vetted and all this, and, I, don't get me wrong, I think we need good quality people, qualified people for these different commissions, but it just seems a little more intimidating to the public to want to volunteer.
I would, yeah, I can appreciate that, and, um, I would say that what is missing from today is, council doesn't have an opportunity to see who else has applied, um, and there are times when somebody will reach out to a council member and let them know that they've applied, but, um, you know, there's, and, and this is a little bit of a two-way, there's a, there's a little, there's, there's kind of two things that happen, there's the applicant, applicant, and then there's the recruiter, right, like the, the person who was recruited for a position, which that can still happen as well. Um, many times I'll be in the community and be like, you'd be great for, have you considered a position on, or somebody's giving feedback, and like, you'd be fantastic on the planning commission, of which usually people say, ah, no, 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 thank you.
No matter what you do, you still have to have a process for people to apply.
I, I think.
And I don't, I don't think this, this is precluding anybody, and I think it still, uh, gives the council not, an opportunity to look at these applicants and talk to them or whatever, even on a one-to-one basis, and so I don't see anything wrong with, uh, at least having a process where, you know, people can fill out the paperwork, we've obviously had to do that, what's your interest and that kind of thing.
Right.
And the interview wouldn't have to go past that.
So Mayor, Mayor Dave, with this process, I, too, I like the, the time layout, I mean, that's really good, just get that documented.
Yeah.
Your support for this, is that largely, is it, is it drawing more people in to have those conversations, to actually get people through that vetting process, or where do you feel like the biggest gap is today?
I feel like, so let's take, um, uh, planning commission, let's take planning commission, for example, right, so there'll be times where we have, we'll have a couple of positions open on the planning commission, and I'll have accounts, I'll have conversation with, um, Chair Gerard of, you know, gosh, what do we, what's needed, and, and, um, you know, he, he, he has great perspectives of, oh, we're missing a voice of X, or, you know, there was a time where we seemed to have a lot of, um, people involved that were in the development community, that's changed a little bit, um, and so he would have the conversation of, we're really missing like the resident of Forest Lake perspective, 'cause we've got realtors and people that are involved in development, um, and there, there's times where that perspective is helpful, and I can always have that conversation in today's process, but he doesn't have the benefit of seeing who else is applying, to really be able to, oh yeah, that would, that, that is a candidate that we need, or, um, you know, just helping to, there's, there's a lot of times we'll have five great people that are interested, luxury to have, um, and to have the, um, at least the chair of the, um, the commission just involved in that process of, you know, what's the dynamic that's gonna work well for the group? Um, you know, we should be striving to be the, you know, some, it's something people want to do and want to be part of, um, and so just making sure we're putting the best people in the best seat in the most transparent way, 'cause the other thing that happens in absence of that is, well, it's just the mayor's choice, and there's really not, I don't ever come to you and say, well, here's why I didn't, you know, here's why, you know, we had eight applicants, and I'm going to, instead I come to you with, here's the nominee, and you ask some questions, and we approve. Um, I just think some broader visibility to that just creates a better process.
So, I hear you correctly, I mean, you're, this, this process would enable, in your example, Mr. Gerard, to be a part of that interview process?
And, and to see, and to, and to see the applicants, yes, and to, um, you know, ultimately, um, at, at least to be able to voice an opinion. Um, obviously, the chair doesn't have a voice up here to, to, um, to, to vote, but certainly that feedback is valuable. Um, and also, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit more of a formal process, a lot of times the conversations happen, um, i- i- in a coffee shop, it, which is also okay, but, um, it's very, i- in its current structure, very informal, and just a little additional, um, I, I think a little more formality provides just a little bit better transparency for all, and, um, lets everyone kind of provide some perspectives. So, um, so, you know, my, this is Ben, a bit of a conversation with staff and myself over this last year, of, gosh, how could we do this better? Um, this was a recommendation of a, a different structure.
I, I, you know, I would defer to you, obviously having that position to, to bring on people, uh, but, you know, just, again, we, just restricting people or being intimidated to, to volunteer is, is a concern, and we have one person, uh, Jeff Larson, that's sitting on two committees, and two commissions right now, for probably a reason, 'cause of lack of people, we, I think we still have an open position on the EDA, and then of course, we've talked about the parks, like, so, that's, I don't, it's, if, if we were having ten people apply for each position on these commissions, I would see more, why there'd be, need to be more formal, and hopefully that happens, and that's a good problem, I guess, to have, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open either way.
Okay. There, okay, thank you for that.
I need ten people to serve next, next year, so how do you want staff to proceed? I mean, I don't necessarily want to make a public call for applications, we don't have a way to vet through them. I know that there was some conversation last year when the Parks Commission had, um, resigned, the members of the Park Commission had resigned, and we did get applications, and at that time, I don't remember exactly, but I think we had, you know, four or five. Um, how do, how does the city want to continue to, to garner volunteer, to get volunteers to help support? That, that's all I need to know. Maybe I missed the direction there.
Yeah, no, I, I rec, so personally, I think we should proceed as, as the memo outlines, and especially because given, A, we're seeding an entire commission, so there is a, a little bit of a different dynamic than if we're seeding one EDA member, um, and so maybe necessitates a little bit of a different process or a broader process, and an opportunity to see how it goes, and, you know, what is the feedback from, um, EDA, what's the feedback on planning commission, um, just get some feedback after we've done it the first time.
Okay, so try it this year, see how it goes, and then, okay, all right.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you.
All right, uh, that closes our workshop topics, discussion topics for this evening, let's move into staff updates, and Abby, we'll start with you.
Uh, the only update I have is Hometown Holiday is this Friday night, four thirty to six thirty, tree lighting is about six forty-five, so at Hometown Holiday, in addition to Santa, we'll have a petting zoo and smore stations and outdoor games, a little more winter festively, um, those couple hours, and then kind of move over to the trees, so most of the activities will focus, be in the park around the gazebo. Uh, the council is there, if you, or council in the past has been there to kind of do a formal, thank you for being here, and stand and huddle in the cold together while we light the tree. Um, you'd be asked to be there about six, six thirty, so that we can, um, get everything ready for you guys to do that.
Excellent.
That's the only update I have.
Thank you. Good opportunity to invite council, as we have in the past, to all join us for the tree lighting, it's kind of a lovely tradition.
Yep.
Thank you. Patrick?
Uh, no report.
Amanda?
No report, Your Honor.
Dave?
I just want to use my update time to thank Rocky Elstead, uh, he decided to throw his last shovel full of asphalt this year, so he, uh, he's retiring after twenty-four years. Um, his last day of work is November thirtieth, but, um, really like to thank him for all the time he's spent here, and he doesn't like public, uh, public knowledge, so he, he, he wasn't gonna show up no matter what I did, so, I'll just take my time to thank him right now, but, uh, he will be definitely missed, um, yeah.
Well, please express our appreciation.
Yep.
Very good, thank you, Dave. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, just recap, last Monday, we had the public open house for the Broadway Avenue Maintenance Project, that's planned for two thousand and twenty-four construction. If you have any questions with that project, feel free to reach out, but the intent of that would be to start after the Fourth of July, and reason for the public open house is with concrete work, you're gonna have some, uh, delays when traffic can drive on it, it's a lot different than a by-two-minute road, so didn't have a big show outs, uh, show up for that, but I'm sure once construction starts, we'll definitely hear about it and, uh, have to respond to those messages accordingly. Uh, we've had a couple good property owner meetings with the county-state Highway Thirty-two project with force, uh, road realignments, uh, next steps would be to have another large meeting, trying to coordinate, uh, available dates with Mayor Bain and Councilmember Erickson, and we'll schedule that meeting accordingly. Along with that project, we'll be submitting that LRIP grant application, so that grant application will meet all the requirements that the project has proposed, and we will, uh, hopefully be successful in that to buy down our local share, so, uh, that's basically the intent of that application. So with that, just open up with any questions you might have.
Ryan, the.
Much basketball coaching, that's, I have no voice.
Yeah. Um, what, status of the, um, gas line project that's happening on sixty-one, um, is it, is it stalled out a little bit, or are they on track? Um, I'm thinking in particular the section that is kind of right across, right across from Wells Fargo.
I believe they have the gas main in, they might have some service work left, and I know they're doing a bunch of restoration curb work and stuff, so, um, I can follow up with them, they're project manager, but it seems that they're doing restoration seating and blanketing and all that, so I, you gotta be pretty close to done, though. That was a pretty, it's like a six-inch main, they
Yeah.
ran through there, plus having to reconnect all the services, they picked a bad time of the year to do it, so, but, that's itself.
Some lane, lane limiters there and some traffic disruption, it'd be nice to get that clear. Okay, thank you. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Detective Scott Graff, who is retiring after, I'm sorry, retiring, leaving for another department sadly, but he, he's definitely gonna be missed, he has worked patrol and, uh, in the detective division for over a decade, and he's really, really helped out with the record management system over the years, um, when Washington County, um, rolled that out, so, um, just, just want to publicly thank him for his service with the city of Forest Lake, and specifically with the Forest Lake Police Department.
Yeah, thank you, pass along our appreciation as well, thank you. And Chief Newman?
No updates.
All right, Kevin?
No updates.
All right, we'll bring up council conversation, our council updates, Councilmember Roberts?
Have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Valento?
Nothing from me tonight.
Councilmember Hussin?
Uh, no, nothing tonight.
And Councilmember Erickson?
I was just, uh, had an opportunity to participate in the Rotary Club Turkey Trot last Thursday, we had over a hundred and seventy attendees, which was fantastic, and raising funds for the Rangers, supporting Rangers, so, it was a great event and much appreciated weather, so, and then I just wanted, there was a, a comment made in open forum, I just want to express how excited I am to see the downtown bridge lit up, and then acknowledge that that funding came from local residents and business owners, it wasn't part of our general fund budget, so, I'll see it on the record.
Fully donated, so, well done.
All right, um, I also don't have any updates, other than just our kind of retaliation of some comments that I made earlier around, um, and reminder for council that we do have a special budget meeting scheduled for seven o'clock next Monday, um, which is the preview for our first council meeting in December, which will be our consideration of the, um, budget, and then also look forward to seeing everyone Friday evening at the tree lighting. With that, uh, we are going to move into a closed session, and so I would move that council move into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Thirteen D zero five subdivision two B for preliminary consideration of allegations or charges against an individual subject to its authority. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving into closed session? Signal by fa, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and, um, after closed session, um, this being the last item on our agenda, we will come back into open session simply to adjourn, and with that, we are in closed session. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.